At this time, I call the Thursday, July 10th, regular meeting of the County Commission to Auto. I'm glad to see we got the Chief Deputy Sheriff with us tonight. The Sheriff's out of town. He didn't send us just anybody, folks. He sent us the Chief Deputy. We're honored to have him.
Amen.
We're also honored to have with us Mr. Freddie Edmonds of the Mauders Crossroads CH Church. And he's gonna lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner Henderson, we remain standing for him to do the Pledge of Allegiance. You say the prayer.
All right. Lord Freddie, dear Lord, we just thank you so much for your many blessings, Lord. And Lord, we just have to use you. We thank you so much. We thank you all your blessings. And we had to see grace and counsel us tonight. And say, make a decision. This is not only gonna impact you, it's gonna impact other people as well, Lord. And Lord, we know that you're with us only in the valley. You're there. We're on the mountains, and we sometimes forget you, Lord. You are there. But Lord, you're always with us, and we thank you so much. Blessings, just be with you, God, and raise us. As in your name, pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Lord, who is safe and well. And to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, and with which we worship. Just as thou shalt.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds. We appreciate you coming. And if you would, eat enough all of us tonight, okay? I know that's where you head. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes of the previous meetings they sent to you?
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. End of discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. The approval of the agenda, I would like to take off Item 10, which is the FY 2026 transit fees. That is not available yet, so that will be placed back on the August agenda. And also, I would like to take off the agenda, Item Number 16, which is an update on the alcohol license ordinance. There's still a little work being done on that, so we will put that back, Madam Clerk, on the August agenda. Without objection, we'll remove Items 10 and 16. Chair, here's no objection. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as printed with those two taken off?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. End of discussion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion's carried. We got a small crowd. That means they must not, nobody be too mad with us. Item 6 is going to be the departmental reports. We start with Director Broom with the Office of Emergency Services. Director Broom.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. You have my submitted reports. I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Is there any questions to Director Broom on his reports that you have with him? If not, thank you. Madam Clerk, if you would, for the record, I didn't recognize the fact that Commissioner Tankersley is not with us, so everybody's here with Commissioner Tankersley. Next, Item 6B is the Recreation Department under the direction of Director Latrellis Glaze. Director Glaze, good to have you back with us. You had a lot going on out at the complex and hadn't been able to come. Good to see you.
Yes, sir. You have a written report in front of you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Okay, let me look at this thing in just a minute. I don't wear this. Face behind it, though. Okay. You see his report? Is there any questions, Director Glaze? If not, thank you. And you're welcome to leave if you want to. You're welcome to stay. 6C is the Finance Director Doss.
Chairman, Commissioners, you have our credit reports. The only other thing I would like to add is that our fiscal year for 2025 ended on June the 30th. Our office has started closing the fiscal year, and our auditors should be with us in the first part of September. And we plan on having the audit report done and have the plumbary report to y'all first of December. If there are no other questions, Chairman, I will read the cash.
Any questions, Director Doss? Proceed.
Our cash and cash equivalent report with month ending June of 2025. Our SLOSS 7 Fund, $2,308,602. Our T SLOSS Fund, Transportation SLOSS Fund, Our Solid Waste Fund, $872,32. Our General Fund, $855,582. The American Rescue Plan Fund, excuse me, The Emergency Fund, the General Fund, Emergency Fund, The Water Reserve Fund, $275,580. The Water Fund, $158,319. Those are all of our major funds. We have several others. The, sorry, there we go. The total of all of our cash in our bank accounts is $6,637,730. Our Raymond James Investment Accounts, our CDs, one day, $599,767. Our Raymond James Enhanced Savings, $544,864. Our total investment accounts, $2,144,631. Our total cash and cash equivalent in the bank at the end of June is eight days, $813,361. And another Director Broom gave a report at the work session. We have received $125,000 of Category B expense, which was expensed for the storm, and that is reflected in our cash accounts. We are still waiting for the Georgia Emergency Management Agency to release $2.6 million in Category A expenses that we had to pay to get rid of debris. Chairman, that's my report.
Director Doss, I know this is June 30th ending with $855,582 in the General Fund. I think today I saw what it, nine point something?
Yes, sir. So the difference in the two numbers is what we report to you on a daily basis is actual cash in the bank, but what this number reflects is expenses that we have obligated against that number. So...
And as they know, we, if we got under that 500, 500,000 or less, then we've already got approval to transfer some money from somewhere else into the account. Director Broom is here, but of this 2.6 million or so that we got, we will be reimbursed back, and that goes back into the General Fund?
Yes, sir. That goes into the General Fund. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we really are almost, it was like 2.9 or something to begin with. We got to 100 and 200 and something. We just got right?
Yes, sir. Well, the 257, $122,000 of it belonged to the city, so we got the balance of it. But the $2.6 million will get us close to about $9.2 million. So we actually have it on the books as being owed to us. We just don't have the cash. We have an IOU.
Okay. Any questions, Director Doss? Okay, we accept the report. Item 6D is the Public Works Community Development Director Seymour.
Chairman, Members of the Board, you have my written reports. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions. I'll be more than happy to answer questions if you have them.
Any questions, Director Seymour? Okay, thank you. You might as well stay ahead.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Item 7, I guess we have to tap on here. I'll get confused. All right, Item 7. And I know y'all thought I was fixing to forget, but we're going, is there a motion that we go into our public hearing?
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. End of discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. We are now in our public hearing. 7A is an applicant for a special use request from Mark and Sonya Downer, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. On July 7th, Planting Commission heard the following request. The applicant is Mark Sonya Downer, MAP 48, Parcel 101, better known as 2951 White Rock Road. Consistent of 10.32 acres. Currently is on A1. The request is for special use revision. They actually have a special use currently today for a marriage counseling part of their ministry. They want to revise that special use to include anyone that has a need. And the recommendation from the board, Planning Commission Board, is approval of that special use revision.
Okay, you heard the request from the Planning Board. I was prepared to make a few little comments about this one, but is Mr. Downer here? Boy, you just did get here. You was fixing to, you was fixing to say something. Okay, we taking up yours now. We got the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Now regroup and come back to what I was doing 'cause I was fixing to not act on it. We got the report from it, and we just, I talked about it a little bit, and I talked to Director Seymour as well as to the Commissioners in our work session this afternoon earlier. Look at them notes. I am, I have asked the Commissioners in the work session. We talked. I think the recommendation from the Planning Commission is too broad for us to act on it. I'm concerned, and we're concerned, of the fact that if we give a special use, it needs to be tied down a little bit better than a broad spectrum of what we do. Special use is granted. You're an A1 agricultural district, and it's granted for a special particular use, like a marriage counseling place or drug rehabilitation place or Jiffy Lube or whatever is done for that one specific reason. We feel that this one is too broad of what it's doing because the revision would include anyone with the need. That opens it up to being pretty broad. I don't want to deny and vote against the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is one of the options we have. We don't have to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission. County Commission is the final approval. However, 99% of the time, we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission. What I don't want to do is call it to a vote to deny because if we do that, then it's 12 months before you can even bring it back to the Planning Commission or the County Commission. I think we got some things we broke out. I think we can obtain the goal that y'all want that would satisfy me and the Commission, this Commission. With that being said, I don't think anybody's here that would be speaking for or against, looking at, I know about everybody in the room. What I'd like to do, though, is to send this back to the Planning Commission, which means it will come back to the Planning Commission at their August meeting. I did see somewhere, y'all having an August meeting?
Yes, sir.
It will come back to the August meeting, and I want y'all to get with Director Seymour and get some of the things out that we need to see before we just approve something that's too broad on special use. As I've said before, special use in zones that not zone for what we, County Grow Plan and ordinance says to do has to be a little bit concerned of what we do inside of an A1 district or R1 or whatever, what we do that goes really against what the book guides us to do. I hope that makes sense, but I don't want to kill it 'cause I think what y'all doing is good. But we got, we have got to know before we do something that will come back and hit us down the road is to send this back to the Planning Commission and let y'all work it out and get it worked out and come back, and it can come back at the August meeting and get it done. So my recommendation is gonna be that we send, that we send this back to the Planning Commission. They'll give it back to us at the August meeting, okay? Because I appreciate y'all, but I just think this has gotten too broad. Okay, is there anything else that could be said on this one?
No, sir.
I can't vote on it now. Vote on it when I come out to public hearing. And I'll be glad to talk to y'all about it, too, if you want to. Okay, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. The second applicant is Faith Community Church, MAP 39, Parcel 009, Level 1437, Leathersville Road, 8.21 acres. Currently is on C3. They are requesting a variance on the setback. The setback on Thompson Highway is 125 foot. They're asking for a 37-foot variance on the Thompson Highway side. They meet the requirement on the Leathersville side. This would not put the church, the new sanctuary that they're building, any closer to Thompson Highway than what the current church sanctuary is at today. And the recommendation from the Planning Commission is approval unanimously, Chairman.
Okay, we got this one, and we looked at it, and we talked about it. Normally, we don't give a variance as much as this varies with it being the church, and it's not encroaching any farther to the roads than the current buildings they have that was built way before we even knew what zoning was. It was back when you could just build whatever you want to. Before we, I know we taking this vote outside, but we, I think we like it, but is there anyone that have to do this? And I don't think I see anybody that would be preaching. The pastor of Faith Community Church is here. He left a big camp they have in, camp they have to do this. Faith Community Church is one of the fastest-growing churches in our county. I said earlier at a meeting this afternoon that we got a problem, I hear problems with parking downtown Lincoln. We don't have enough parking. I said, that's a real good problem to have. Because I can remember a few years ago, we didn't have a problem with parking downtown Lincoln. Wasn't nothing down there nobody to park for. County's growing, and restaurants and other things, dress shops are coming, so we got something to park for. The same thing as Faith Community Church, as well as other churches. It's a growing church. It excites me that the church is having to build a huge auditorium for a community our size. And I think it's gonna be an asset to the county. And I know that some of these people that in here are your members, and I just wish you best of luck in the world with some of these people you have to deal with on a weekly basis. But, and some of us probably need to be there. But if you don't, you can always get it online. That's where I listen to it a little bit, a little bit more because I go to another church. But anyway, is there anyone here that wants to speak against this variance? This is the public hearing. I mean, is anyone here wants to speak for it? Preacher, you don't have to if you don't want to. It's going your way. Okay, that, we're going to the next one. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The next applicant is Stuart Roberts, MAP 62C, Parcel 1015, better known as 1173 Overlook Road. Consistent of .46 acres. Currently is on R1. He is applying for a side setback variance to place a 22-by-40 building. In the current location, there are two structures in that today. He is asking for a five-foot setback variance to be able to put that new building in place, Chairman. And the recommendation is approval unanimously.
Okay, I know everybody in the room is Mr. Roberts, so I'm assuming you Mr. Roberts. Is that correct? Okay, good. Glad you're here, 'cause people don't show up here, they don't get, it's put off to the next month. You've heard the request and the recommendations from the Planning Commission Board. So is there anyone here that wants to speak against this variance? I don't think there is. Is there anyone here that wants to speak for the variance? Same with you. I don't think you got to do anything, Mr. Roberts. But let me, let me say that I'm not totally in agreement with the Planning Commission's recommendation. We vote after we come out, we'll vote in just a minute after we come out of the public hearing, but I will be asking the Commission into voting on motion that we add something to it. And I looked at it, and I was damaged the property yesterday or this morning, I forget when it was. Yesterday, I think. Beautiful place down there. You must know somebody with the coat 'cause you got a good view, and you got, you got a pretty place down there, so, and I support what you're doing. What I was a little concerned about, and we were, as we mentioned it, and I know that you, I was told that you told the Planning Commission that you planned to remove those other three buildings on that piece of property. Is that correct?
Two structures.
Come to the podium. That way, your wife can go home and look at, look at the video and be sure you was at the meeting. State your name for us, please.
Stuart Roberts. The two structures that are there will be removed, and the new building will sit right where those are at, same footprint, except five foot from the property. And if you notice, my neighbor's little building is actually breaching the property line there.
I noticed where the fence was in the wood stack. It looked like it might, is that where you're talking about?
No, sir. It's right, it's the buildings. But that's, both of those buildings will be removed. The new structure color will match my house. It'll be great, because my house siding will run vertical as the siding on my house. So I'm just trying to improve the place.
You got to prove the place is well-kept. Let me, let me, um... Any of y'all have any questions? Okay. Don't leave yet, but, I mean, you can go sit down. Don't leave until you're... Okay, that concludes the three that we have on the zoning. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we come out of our public hearing.
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any comments on the motion? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Okay, we're gonna take them up. Now we back in our regular commission meeting. 7A is the special use request for Mark and Sonya Downer. I'd like to recommend that we send this request from the Planning Commission to approve back to the Planning Commission for further study, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second. Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis. End of discussion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. 7B is the variance request for Faith Community Church. For those that listen that might want it, I think it'll be on anyway. It's MAP 39, Parcel 009. If you don't know where it is, maybe you need to find where it is. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and grant the variance?
Send me. I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That's second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis. End of discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. 7C is applicant from Mr. Stuart Roberts, MAP 62C, Parcel 015, and that is for a variance. You've heard the request. What I would like to do is to add to what the Planning Commission did to accept it, and I would like to say that we would add to it, Director Seymour, that we'll issue the certificate to remove after he removes three, the two buildings that are currently there. Isn't that the way that I, is that, and I'm in the property seat the only way I see that?
Yes, sir. It would be a condition of the approval is that the two buildings...
A condition of the approval is that we get those buildings moved before we do it.
Before you approve it?
Sir?
Before you approve it?
Before we issue a permit for the new structure.
I'm asking the contractor to permit it.
Yes.
We, we, we're approving it. They'll just see to it that the buildings are gone before we issue a permit, new building, new.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is to accept the recommendation with the condition that we have the building be removed. We have a, the second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Antonakis. End of discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Thank y'all. All y'all welcome to stay. It'd be interesting to you. If you don't like that, it puts you to sleep, so. All right, we're gonna move on now because most of this we've already been over. Thank y'all, Mr. Downer. We are now at the, Item 8 is the Cooperative Agreement, Director Deal.
Good evening, Agent. I am here to ask that you approve the cooperative agreement with the CSRA Regional Commission and Area Agency on Aging. And this is a reimbursement grant we receive every year which allows us to serve meals to the senior citizens who attend the senior center activities. This year's grant is for a total of $78,669, and the local match of that is $5,899.
Okay, is, is, any questions to Hough? All right, I need a motion to accept the FY 2026 Cooperative Agreement with the CSRA Regional Commission for the Senior Citizen Nutrition Program in the amount of $78,669. And to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement, the local match will be $5,899, and that is a budgeted item in the General Fund. Is there a motion?
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
There's a second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. End of discussion on the motion, or to Director Deal. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Item 9 is the Emergency FY 2026 Subcontract Coordinated Transportation Agreement, Director Deal.
Okay, for this one, I'm asking for the approval of an emergency subcontracture agreement with Heart of Georgia Alton High Regional Commission. This agreement runs from July 2025 to September 2025. It allows us to provide coordinated transportation for senior citizens within our community through the Department of Human Services. This is a fixed-rate contract with no guaranteed volume.
Okay, we've heard that. We've talked a little about it. Is there a motion to accept the 90-day coordinated transportation agreement with Georgia Alton High Regional Commission for coordinated senior transportation and to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement?
I'll make a motion, Chairman.
Our motion, is there a second?
There's a second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde. End of discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none. Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, and we have tabled item ten, direct to deal. You're welcome to leave.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate all you do. Item eleven is the Lamar Blanchett Seed Project. The director of the Development Authority, Director McNeese.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I would like to recommend that we approve Two KM Architects to complete the architectural design and cost elements of our seed grant.
Okay, is there any questions, Director McNeese? All right, I need a motion to select, uh, Two KM Architects Incorporated as the architectural firm to conduct the twenty-twenty-five State Economic and Infrastructure Development Grant for the eighteen-twenty-three exchange project. All of you know, this is a, this is a big project, we holding our breath, hoping we get the grant, it's about a, it's a little over a million dollars. To do a lot of work that needs to be done to save a eighteen-twenty-three building that houses a lot of things. Is there a motion?
So made, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all you do. This is a big project, one of the biggest ones I guess, probably. Anyway, it's, it's a good project. Thank you. Item twelve is the Greater Clark Hill Library Agreement. Director Potten, as you know, is, is out sick, so we'll take this up. The Greater Clark Hill Regional Library is, will be dissolving on the, at the end of the year. Columbia County pulled out, it was, it was a Columbia, Burke, Warren, and Lincoln Counties. Columbia County has pulled out to go on their own, so we are floating in to see one that's somewhere looking for a life preserver. But our contract will go through the end of this year with Greater Clark Hill, and they will be paying us for six months instead of twelve months when the contract ends in December, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and six dollars and forty-six cents, and I'm going to entertain a motion that we take this money.
So made, Mr. Chairman.
We got a motion, is there a second?
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. Item thirteen is a request for proposal from, for telecommunication system for county buildings, Director Walton.
Uh, Commissioners, we conducted an RFP process during this year. After reviewing the technical and all parts of those responses, I-
Pull your microphone up.
Our recommendation-
Commissioner Clyde couldn't hear you.
Our recommendation is for Augusta Telephone, this will replace twenty-five-year-old phones, and it will pay for itself in about two years. So I asked for approval for the chairman and myself to finalize the agreement, have the attorney review it, and for the chairman to approve the agreement.
Okay, you heard the request. Any questions, Director Walton? If not, I entertain a motion to accept Augusta Telephone's proposal, VOIP Telecommunication Services for the one-time cost of seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents, to be paid from the county's special purpose local option sales tax seven, and an estimated monthly reoccurring cost of one thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, which is a budgeted item in the general fund, and to authorize the chairman and the technology director to negotiate final details with the vendor, and to authorize the chairman to execute any related documents. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Antonakis. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Commissioner Clyde will be abstaining, so the chairman will break the tie, and I vote with these two. So it passes. Yet, see, if I hadn't voted, it wouldn't have passed. Is that right?
That's exactly right.
Out of motion and a second, Commissioner Clyde.
Obstained.
Obstained, so I had to break the tie. Don't get, do that often, thank y'all for not giving me that privilege very often. Okay, that, um, item fourteen, Mr. Cook, you, you getting an education over there too, aren't you? Hey! I said, Chief Cook, you getting an education over there too, aren't you? Okay. All right, item fourteen, Historical Society Day Sponsorship, um, Clerk McKellum. But pull your microphone.
This is a bi-annual sponsorship that the Historical Society asks for Pioneer Day. It's for signage at the, at the historical park for two hundred and fifty dollars every two years.
I just realized I took that from you at this earlier meeting, so I, I noticed it tonight. We know what it is, I need a, any questions to the Clerk McKellum? I need a motion to sponsor the twenty-twenty-five Lincoln County Historical Society Pioneer Day with all part of a plaque, the cost of two hundred and fifty dollars to be paid for the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Antonakis. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. Item fifteen is a lease agreement with Cellco Doing Businesses Verizon, Director Broom. All the county attorney, whichever one of y'all is going to take this.
I got it. Chairman, we brought forward a contract from Cellco Verizon Wireless, the board's consideration. There is also an agreement for, um, construction management services before the board, the amount of twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars, and as well as marketing consulting fees from VCI, which is Value Concept Incorporated, who have brought this customer to potentially co-loc, co-locate a tier-one wireless system on Tower Two at Graves Mountain.
Okay, Attorney Gracie, do you have any thing you need to add or comment? Pull that microphone up, where Commissioner Antonakis can hear you.
I don't have anything. I reviewed the agreements with Value Concept and the lease agreement with Verizon or Cellco.
Everything's in order for us to vote on?
It is.
Got your approval?
It does.
Anything comes back, it's on you, right?
Yep.
You covered, you, you covered under the county's general liability. Okay, we heard it all. Any questions, Director Broom, or the Attorney Gracie? Okay, we got three motions we're going to have to have. The first motion is to engage Value Concept Incorporated for construction management services, at cost not to exceed two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, to monitor Verizon Wireless co-locating on Tower Two at Graves Mountain with funds paid from the general fund, and authorizing the chairman to execute the management agreement. Is there a motion?
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. Motion two is a motion to engage Value Concepts Incorporated for marketing and consulting services for Tower Two at Graves Mountain, at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars, with funds being paid from the general fund, contingent on the county receiving a fully executed thirty-year co-location lease agreement from Verizon Wireless, and authorizing the chairman to execute the service agreement. I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. And the motion is carried. Motion three is to accept a thirty-year lease agreement with Cellco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless to co-locate on Tower Two at Graves Mountain for thirty thousand dollars for year one, and a three percent lease escalator for each succeeding year, and to authorize the chairman and the clerk to execute the lease agreement. Is there a motion?
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? The chair would like to, yeah.
Clyde, you said Collins.
Oh, excuse me, a motion made by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde.
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion? I don't hear any. I have a comment, I want to say that this is, instead of one of those spending deals, a receiving deal, so it's kind of hard for us not to vote to, to do this. Director Broom, Attorney Gracie, y'all have done a good job, and this is revenue coming in to the county for, for them putting the tower up on our towers, Tower Two at the mountain. This is not the only one we get, and we give more money, as it is, a good bit more money. All right, with that said, we receiving this, is there, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. Item sixteen was tabled. Item seventeen is to repeal the water availability fee ordinance. Attorney Gracie, Director Doss, whichever one of y'all handling this?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we are going to repeal section seventy-one twenty-six, which is our water availability fee, based off of an order entered on March eighteenth of twenty-twenty-five. There is a resolution that's required to be read two times, and with your permission, I'll begin the first reading of the resolution.
Okay, I didn't have to spend that one, did I?
Resolution number twenty-twenty-five dot oh-seven dot one-oh, ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County, Georgia, amending chapter seventy, utilities, article three, county water service, division two, requirements for service, section one-twenty-six, water availability or standby service charge, repealing any conflicting ordinances and establishing an effective date. This ordinance-
Attorney Gracie?
Yes, sir.
Without objection, I'd like to spend the reading of the resolution.
Yes, sir.
No objection from the commission? Let this be the, known as the first reading of the resolution to repeal the water availability fee. The second reading and the vote will come at the August meeting. I would like to ask that the Director Walton, if you would, get this from the clerk, and let's go ahead and put it on the website, and people can look at it on the website, if they have anything. Okay, there's no action on that one, so we are now at, item eighteen is the COA lease renewal on boat ramps in the county with the US Army Corps of Engineers, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, in front of you, you have a lease agreement with the United States Corps of Engineers for nine boat ramps, um, that the county currently has on release. This is a renewal. Uh, it is a five-year renewal, um, at no cost to the county, and, uh, I would ask the Board of Commissioners to approve, the chairman to sign and execute, uh, this lease agreement with the United States Corps of Engineers for a five-year term.
I believe you picked up my notes. Those boat, those boat ramps are Crooked Bridge Ramp, Fishing Creek, Forest Lake Estates, Hidden Harbor, Holloway Road Boat Ramp, Parkway Ramp, Maxim Road Ramp, Montego Point Ramp, and Wells Creek Ramp. Is there any questions, Director Seymour? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept a five-year lease with the US Army Corps of Engineers for nine boat ramps I just read, located throughout the county, and to authorize the chairman and the clerk to execute the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. The next one is item nineteen, is the Cherokee Country Club Road Expense, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Cherokee Country Club Road is coming into, um, pretty significant disrepair, and so I'm asking the Board of Commissioners, uh, for their approval, uh, to spend, um, forty-three thousand, nine hundred and six dollars in teasewash funds, uh, to make the necessary repairs to Cherokee Country Club Road.
Okay, you heard the report from Director Seymour. Any questions to him? Okay, I need a motion to accept a quote from ASA Paving LLC not to exceed four, forty-three thousand, nine hundred and six dollars for repairs to Cherokee Country Club Road, with the funds coming from the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by, I said, in your district, Commissioner Clyde.
No.
You're going to leave it alone?
Nice commission.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. And this is not on the agenda, but I'm going to say it anyway, in case anybody wants to listen. Four generators that we voted back before Christmas, but I think November, so, that we terribly needed during the hurricane that put four of our water, four of our subdivisions out of water because we had no electricity, even when a lot of the electricity came back, other people have. They have arrived, they are here, and Director Seymour has said that, um, the company will be installing them sometime around the first part of next week, they'll start working on them, on which one they work on first, do you?
Probably Savannah Bay, yes.
Probably Savannah Bay. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, all, four of these well systems on the water system in District One, in your district, and I want to thank you for all you've done to see to it, to those people in your district. Got a generator where they can drink, drink water and take a bath when the lights go out, so we appreciate that, and that'll start sometime next week. Okay, um, at this time, I need to get a motion that we go into executive session.
So made, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
Second.
Motion is by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde, that we go into executive session to discuss legal matters. Any discussion on that? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried, and we are going into executive session. If you would, we'll be going into this room over here.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we need a motion to enter the regular session, um, a motion that no votes were taken, and authorization for the clerk and yourself to sign the required affidavit.
You heard the statement from Attorney Gracie? Is there a motion that we come out of executive session and sign the-
The required affidavit.
Huh?
The required affidavit.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, the motion is carried. Attorney Gracie?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, based on the conversations in the executive session, um, we would, I would request a motion to file an application for discretionary appeal from the Order of Attorney's Fees that was entered on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, in the case of Serenity Builders versus Lincoln County.
So the motion is to file an appeal with the- So the motion is to file an appeal with the?
Yes, sir. To file a discretion, a petition for discretionary appeal.
Now, Clerk, you got the motion?
Yes, sir.
We all understand the motion. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the county attorney?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Is that clear up all of that?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion? We adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Antonakis, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried and we stand adjourned.